Okay, let's go ahead and call the order of the meeting of the Brandon City Council of June 15th, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone. Christina, can you call the roll?
Clark, David.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Jorgensen.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Parsons.
Present.
Mayor Lombard.
Here. Okay, we need a motion to approve the lengthy agenda that we have tonight.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have one set of minutes from June 1st. If I could have a motion to approve those. Motion of second to approve the June 1st regular meeting minutes as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bills and claims submitted with the agenda totaled $1,828,401.13.
Motion of second.
Motion of second to approve as presented. Any questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have four plats on the consent calendar. I get a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion.
Motion of second to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public input would be the agenda item right now. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so at this time.
My name is Jeremy Olson. I live here in Brandon, and I work for the public department, Public Works Department here in Brandon. And I've come up here before stating points of view about the benefits package that the employees have. And I had planned to say a few more things, but something more important came up. So I was in an accident at work, and there was a trench cave-in, and it was kind of scary. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank people for the quick thinking and definitive action that they took. If they hadn't, I might not even be here tonight. So I'd like to thank Dustin Wagner, Troy Hillman, Matt Brown, Mark Schmeling, and Donovan Carpenter. Those are all guys that I work with that were there and basically saved my life. My wife and five daughters would also like to thank you guys as well, and you should all just be prepared for some more cookies and bars in your future. I would also like to thank the first responders, the PD, the fire department, and the EMTs. If anyone ever utters the phrase "defunding," I would encourage you to send them my way, and I will have a chat with them. I'd also like to thank all the well wishers, and the concerned citizens, and those that said a prayer for me. And I'm humbled to be a part of such a kind and generous community. And I'd also like to thank my wife and children for making sacrifices so I could pursue my opportunity to serve this community. And I'll work to my last breath to pay them back. Finally, I would be remiss not to say something about the benefits, and the only thing I would say is that I too got the memo that Brian Reed put together, and I know he put a lot of work into listening to everyone's side of the issue, and I still think that the simplest answer is usually the best answer, and that a motion should be carried to approve the plan that we have with no amendments or changes, and that it should be seconded, and that it should be voted for unanimously. Anyway, thank you for your time. It's Dave Brandon Strong.
Thank you, Jeremy. I know I can speak on behalf of the council. When Brian called me with that, I think I was more scared than you were when I heard that news, and thanks to all you guys out there that helped him. Tremendous efforts, tremendous. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Seeing or hearing none, we'll go into our first public hearing, our first reading of ordinance 608. Sign regulations. Brian?
This would increase the maximum square footage of signage in the central business and general business districts. I can't remember exactly how much, but it increases it... It allows more signage. This came up for the property located around Sunshine. Papa Murphy's would like to add an additional sign, which wasn't allowed under the old regulations. The new regulations would allow that sign to be placed on Split Rock.
I would just add, when P&amp;Z had this come before them, there was quite a bit of discussion on would we be willing to compromise, because this also played into part that the individual was requesting a variance, which P&amp;Z didn't think would be appropriate, so they adjusted the sign regulations. Don't be surprised if they continue to adjust the sign regulations in the future, but P&amp;Z stands behind this change.
And it actually increases the number of signs per parcel. Before, it was limited to one per street side. Now it's more than that, as long as they meet space, spacing requirements. So the big sign on Split Rock, it has Sunshine and Lewis Drug. I can't remember what else is on there. You can have more than that sign now, as long as you're 100 feet in between signs.
Okay. Any questions on behalf of the council? Comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the first reading.
Motion.
Aye.
Motion of second to approve the first reading of ordinance 608 regarding sign regulations. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a request for a package off-sale license from Casey's General Store, number 2186. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the package off-sale license to Casey's General Store. Any questions from the council? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have off-sales wine and cider license from Wild Prairie Winery. Easy for me to say. They would like to sell and taste test at the farmer's market, as I understand, Brian?
Correct.
I got a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the off-sale wine and cider license for Wild Prairie Winery. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Jesse from the Makita organization is going to introduce himself to all of us. Welcome aboard, Jesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for having me here tonight. We appreciate it, and thank you to the administration for having me to speak. Thank you so much. Want to introduce myself. I started as the executive director for Makita on April 1st. It's been an interesting time to be starting a job in economic development, and so I apologize for just getting to you now, but given the situation that we're all experiencing right now, I thought it would be appropriate to give everybody some space through April and May. I'm a hands-on guy, and so I would like to work with you as much as possible on your goals and your needs, and I think we're very fortunate at Makita to have such a great partner in the city of Brandon, and the Brandon Development Foundation. Prior to coming to this job, I worked as the Chamber and Economic Development Director for the city of Hartford, and there I looked up to you as a leader in economic development, talking to Dennis, with his experience with the Brandon Development Foundation, working with their Chamber of Commerce, and implementing things in our Chamber of Commerce, and it really helped me understand the importance of regionalization and regionalism, especially considering that I was an intern for Makita of Akita in college. And so everything comes full circle, and I really appreciate the opportunity to serve this organization, and serve the communities here around Sioux Falls. And if you have any questions for me, at this time, I'd take them, and if not, feel free to reach out to me. I will be reaching out to you in some form in the future to set up meetings, to learn more about your community, and how I might serve you best.
As I said, we welcome you, Jesse. My friends and colleagues over in Hartford had a lot of good things to say about you, so we look for good things.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Go sell all those lots out there.
We're working on it. Great. Thank you so much.
Sell them all. Any questions from the council for Jesse? Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have an appeal of the denial of variance by planning and zoning at 1601 East Rushmore Drive. Request from Mitch Lynch. Is he here to speak on behalf of the appeal?
I don't see him. Very similar to what you went through last meeting with the conditional use permit in home daycare. Mr. Lynch applied for a variance to construct a garage, an attached garage. He wanted to add a third stall. At that time, he was looking at a variance for the front yard setback and the rear yard setback. He lives right on the corner, or that curve on Rushmore, if you're familiar with it. It's kind of an odd duck. He is on a corner lot, so he does meet the front yard setback, which is 20 feet. He did adjust his garage there. At the first public hearing that planning, or the Board of Adjustment had, they requested he go back and take a look at some other alternatives to mitigate the rear yard setback intrusion. So he came up with three alternative site plans, and they start on page 34. That would be an 18 and 1/2 by 12-foot garage addition. It shows an 18.2-feet rear yard setback. It needs to be 20 feet on a corner lot. And then the next one shows a 22 by 12 addition, and the third one on page 36 would show a 22 and 1/2 by 12 addition. So each one of those, as they get larger, they encroach into the rear yard setback a little bit more. Planning and zoning, like I said, had continuation of the hearing, reviewed those other options. There was also one other option that was presented by planning, or an idea that was presented by planning and zoning, to turn the garage a little bit, or turn the addition to encroach a little bit less on that 20-foot rear yard setback. Quite a bit of discussion between the members. In essence, what came about was that the request was denied. I can't remember, was it 3.3 or 4.2? Anyway. Was it?
We had to have two-thirds.
Yep, you had to have two-thirds. So very similar to the CUP appeal last week, or last meeting, the council has three or four different options. If you so choose, you can overturn the denial. You can remand it back to planning and zone, or Board of Adjustment, with some recommendations as to what you would like to see. You could uphold it, uphold the denial. And once again, no new evidence can be presented at the appeal.
I would just add what Brian said. P&amp;Z spent quite a bit of time looking into this alternative, looking over his alternative, and in the end, as Brian said, it was, the vote was not to grant the variance, so I would urge council, and I would make the motion that we uphold P&amp;Z's vote to not grant the variance.
Motion of second to uphold the denial of the variance at 1601 East Rushmore Drive. Any further questions, comments from the council?
Mr. Jorgensen. If we deny the appeal, will he, could he possibly make another variance request? Or?
He can. I think there's a six-month waiting period. You can't submit a variance application that's similar to one that was previously submitted for, I believe, six months.
So I wasn't present, I was present for the actual, the second discussion. Was it discussed in the P&amp;Z about the house itself being a non-conforming use?
Can you elaborate on the question? Tim, like, why does that matter?
So we maintain a 25-foot rear yard setback. According to this drawing, his house is only 21 feet 8 inches from the property line, so the house is already out of compliance. Basically, that's what I mean.
And, you know, when P&amp;Z looks at these variance requests, they have a whole checklist that they go through to make sure that the situation meets the criteria, and in this case, correct me if I'm wrong, Chuck, but we could not find a hardship for it. And unless there's a hardship, you just really can't grant a variance. And both Tim and Chuck have been involved with these many, many times, so I would urge the council to support P&amp;Z, because they have studied it quite extensively.
And just to clarify, Mr. Lynch was not willing to budge on that rear variance by that foot or two that we would need?
No, the Board of Adjustment, like I said, he submitted three additional plans. The applicant indicated he was unwilling to change from the 22 and 1/2 by 12 garage.
Further questions, council? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Second, Old Business, we have the second reading of ordinance 609, the 2020 budget supplement. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Second.
Motion of second to approve the 2020 budget supplement as presented by the administration. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B of Old Business, we have the second reading of ordinance 610, the cable TV franchise ordinance. Do we have a motion to approve that as presented? Motion of second to approve the second reading of ordinance 610, cable TV franchise agreement. Any questions, comments from the council?
So I've had some contact from residents about the franchise fee, and I just want to clarify that we are providing the opportunity for a franchise fee in this ordinance, but we are not implementing a franchise fee. We want to give future councils that opportunity, so we don't have to rewrite the dumb thing again, but at this point, we are not in favor of a franchise fee.
We have not formally, as our entire council said that, but from comments, it's been pretty much the, that the formal council has not said. Individuals have made that comment. As a group, they have not.
I just wanted to clarify, the pedestal part is absolutely okay with both parties that
I spoke with both Alliance's...
Is that on, Lisa?
Yeah. I spoke with both Alliance's attorney and Midco, and they have approved the language in the ordinance, which provides that pedestals shall be buried unless otherwise authorized by the city. So they are both fully aware of what the draft language is, which is what was proposed by the staff of the city, and their attorney and Alliance's attorney on Friday agreed that was fine, and Midco's representatives said it was fine.
I think that was a change from our original first reading of the ordinance. Administration put a clause in there for the pedestals, the boxes that stand on the corners, to be ground level. Is that correct, Brian?
No, I think it was in the original draft.
Was it in the original?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just trying to clarify why we're talking about this now. It came up somehow.
Yep.
It came up in your rewriting of it. Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Golf course. We have a lease agreement with Miller &amp; Sons Golf Carts for a range picker, a beverage cart, and a maintenance cart, to lease those for a total of $2,509 a year. Andrew?
Yep, so this will replace our picker cart that we lost in the flood last fall. Just with uncertainty this spring, didn't get it done early, because we didn't know if the driving range would even open all year, so we're getting to it now. It's new, it's much safer, it's going to have the hardtop cage as opposed to the soft netting, so it'll be safer for our kids that are picking the range as well, because there's people hitting balls, and if you've ever been to a range, people can aim at them. And then it also includes a beverage cart that would be $200 a month, and that'll be prorated for the months we haven't used it, because their leases are six months on, six off, May through October typically, so we won't have to pay for May and part of June and that, when we get the actual contract paperwork to sign. Other than that, that's just a pretty simple.
Any questions for Andrew?
Happy birthday.
Thank you. No place I'd rather be.
I told you that you weren't able to do that. You're out of line.
You didn't sing.
Yes, you didn't sing. That's what I told you, that you couldn't sing. I apologize. Any other questions?
Loop you approve.
Motion of second to approve the lease agreement with Miller &amp; Sons for a range picker, beverage cart, and a maintenance cart as presented from the administration. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a request from DJ Jer, DJ Jer, I'm not sure how the proper pronunciation at Music Events LLC, to use the golf course parking lot on July 4th.
The list of activities, or potential activities, are shown on page 77. There's a map on page 75 showing the requested area to be roped off for the activities, and then there's also a copy of their liability insurance coverage.
Looking over the plan and the business, we expect to have that day in what kind of looks like they're doing in their goals. I guess I would be opposed to them using our parking lot. I think there's a safer, better, less busy area that we don't need, that they could potentially find. It looks like with selling sponsorships and stuff, it could be for profit, so I could bring in the, you know, should we be charging rent for events like that in a parking lot in July 4th beat a Saturday, like I said. I expect to be pretty busy that day, and that is pretty close to the entrance that areas they're using, so I guess that would be my recommendation.
Do we know if there's any parks that are available that we could offer as an alternative that would accommodate the size they need?
I have to look at the schedule. I know there's somebody in McCarty that day, but I don't know the timeframe.
We have a recommendation from staff then to deny. Is that correct, Brian?
Correct.
Do we need the formal motion to deny or approve?
Sure.
One or the other?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion to deny the request.
Excuse me, I actually represent DJ Jer. Am I allowed to speak to you?
Come on up. DJ Jer, is it?
DJ Jer.
Jer. So I was close on my...
Yeah, his name is Jeremy Breck, so Jer is short for Jeremy Breck. So the whole intent of this event to be held in conjunction with fireworks on July 4th is to bring our businesses back together. I'm actually, I actually live here in Brandon. This exact same event is going to be held in T and in Sioux Falls, so there's three other events, not on the 4th, but me being a resident of Brandon, I wanted to bring here to Brandon, gives those that live here a place to have some good family entertainment. It's social distance friendly. We got a lot of games that we would play, and through our sponsors, that we would get, and we would try and get all the sponsors to be Brandon-based businesses, so it's not like we're sending money out of town. All that, it all stays here in town. Our total cost to us typically for the event that we're putting on, it's a four-hour live game show event, typically that costs $7,500 to do. We're doing it for $2,900. It's all sponsorship-based, keeps it free to everybody that attends. We're also doing kicking money to the fireworks. I know the Brandon fireworks stand across from the golf course has put a fireworks show on, no charge to anybody. He's done that for the last two, three years, and we would like to partner with him to be able to give a little back to him anyways for everything that he's done. And then there's some other family-friendly events that we would do for the first couple hours, and then the second couple hours, we'll actually do events where we, or games where people can actually win prizes from in-kind donors from here in Brandon. So...
What was your name, sir?
Oh, sorry, David Homequest.
You're not Jeremy, then?
I am not Jeremy, nope.
Dave, what?
Homequest.
Homequest.
Maybe I missed it in here. Is, were there times, like a timeframe of the day that you're planning on?
It would be from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, July 4th. From 6:00 to 8:00 would be our family-friendly oriented games geared towards family and kids, and then from 8:00 to 10:00, we'll give away a lot more of the more, like plain family feud, Deal or No Deal, stuff like that, so.
I think the biggest concern on part of the administration was that parking lot being not that big anyhow, and taking up that space on a July 4th holiday like that is probably concerning to them. I think that was the administration's biggest concern, Brian. Correct?
Correct.
Did I have, I had a motion. Did I have a second? I had a motion from Chuck to, correct, Chuck, to deny. Is there a second?
Any thoughts about if you could have...
Can I get a second first?
Oh, I'll second it then.
So I can get back on track?
Oh, sorry. Okay. Any thoughts about if there would be another location we could have it?
If there's another location that would be relatively close to the fireworks, in conjunction with the fireworks, we're actually into patriotic music to go along with it. So that was why we wanted to be as close as we were, so those that were sitting outside would get that ambiance feeling. So that was why we wanted to be as close as we were, so those that were sitting outside would get that ambiance feeling as well.
Any other questions for, from the council?
I would just echo Andrew's comments. I'm concerned about the, you know, all the traffic there and the pressure that puts on, we have limited staff anyway. But is that with the golf course, so I?
Well, the other issue is that people come early for the fireworks and park there, in the parking lot. So I'm not quite sure how that would work.
I'm not sure if you guys can see the map that I provided to Brian. We're only requiring like 15 spaces of parking. Our footprint really isn't that big, and then obviously it would be roped off, so anybody coming in or leaving wouldn't interfere with our foot traffic.
As a mother of three, though, it concerns me where it's located at. I mean, I live out there and with that ditch and everything, with little kids and golfers. I think it's an amazing idea, and I, I mean, like I said, I have three small children, and it sounds like a lot of fun. I just don't know with the golfers and everything if it's an ideal.
Well, we can certainly shift further to the east, towards that corner. I mean, I guess I'm up to whatever suggestions Mr. Bauer would have.
How many people would you anticipate would be there?
So our games are intended to be played by very few people. That's why we can do the social distancing. Spectators can hang out near their cars or in their cars. I'm sure most of them will probably be buying fireworks, and the most players that we have at one time playing a game is 10. So we don't have a whole lot of people just standing around. We do have two large video screens, so those that are standing a distance away can still view what's going on, and then we just interact with those that are playing, and those will actually be inside our roped-in area. The whole intent is it's a come-and-go activity. As people are buying fireworks, they go buy fireworks or whatever, see what's going on, they play a game or two, and then they leave.
We don't, we don't know if McCarty Park is available at all?
It looks like it's not available at 6:00, but it is at 7:00 for the main shelter.
Do you need a hard surface for this, or is this something that could be?
It, yeah, everything's, everything's on a trailer. Yeah, we can go virtual anywhere.
I'm thinking down below the hill where the, close to where the ice skating rinks are, would that be a?
Theoretically, yeah. I don't know if it's by the ice rink. Trying to see how, how patron-friendly that is. I mean, I guess I'm not, I don't drive down that side, so I don't know how well leveled off it is for foot traffic and stuff like that.
I do have to kind of agree with staff that, you know, I look at the placement of this, and if you got a nice day, that parking lot fills up with golfers, right? That would take away from spots. I'm thinking, I guess I would think that McCarty would be a better place either side of that road, if you could consider that.
Yeah, I mean, if it's available, we're up to looking at it, yeah.
I would feel better about it being in a park as well. I just feel like it kind of sets a precedent if we start using our clubhouse parking lot for other things whenever. I don't think we've ever done that in the past. I guess another just quick random thought, I mean, isn't there a park up in that area or, too small? Or the field, maybe even right by TJ's? I don't know if those people would consider, no?
And the other thing too, obviously, with the 10, 8, and 6-year-old, bathrooms. Are you guys gonna be bringing out bathrooms? I mean, that's the other thing, and even if, I mean, I don't feel comfortable with the country, with the golf course, just because it is 45 miles an hour and I just, safety concerns. But there are too, the restrooms. I mean, that's something too, if you're gonna have an event like this, or mainly a big meet gone, or?
Yep, yeah, as I explained to him on the phone that if it was required, then we would certainly put up a, two restrooms.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to deny the use of the parking lot right now. I'm gonna call the question on that. Christina, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Was there any appetite to, with an additional motion to allow utilization at McCarty Park is what I was kind of garnering out of that?
I'd make that motion. If that's something that would work, we won't be back in session before the, before the event.
Right, that's why I'm.
So we'd have to approve that now, so that would be a, you know, conditional on you being able to use that. I'd make that motion.
You said that there's an event until 7:00?
Yeah, and I can call them and I can see, you know, if they plan to be in there until 7:00, or what they're, if they're gonna utilize just the shelter, and maybe we can utilize the lawn area. So we'll just have to work with you and them and see what we can do to get you in earlier. Otherwise, right now, it's looking 7:00.
Yep, that's fine.
If he's gonna use the land across the street, he could do it at 6:00.
Right, if you're gonna use the hockey area, then.
There's lots of room there.
Yeah.
And it's been used for lots of events, so.
Motion by Cole. Was there a second?
Yes.
By Clark. Any further questions or comments by the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number, in the golf course, item number three, we have a recommendation to hire in the community room Matthew Peash at $9.30 an hour.
Loop approved.
Motion is second to hire Matthew Peash at $9.30 an hour for the community room out at the golf course. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under Parks and Rec, we have a request for food truck at McCarty Park on August 1st from Kristy Gilbrandson for a family reunion. Is there a motion to approve the food truck utilization? Motion is second to approve the food truck request from Kristy Gilbertson for the McCarty Park on August 1st, 2020. Any questions from the council? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have a request for a new event entitled McCarty Movie Nights. There are five nights that they've requested to show movies for the youngsters within the city of Brandon. Motion to approve that? Motion is second. It's an event run and proposed by the Brandon Chamber of Commerce, correct?
Correct. Well, it was brought up by the park committee, and then Rachel Neiman at the chamber kind of took it and ran with it. So she's got things lined up, ready to roll.
They will be responsible for the organization and stuff, okay? Motion is second to approve. Any further questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have the first reading of ordinance 611, open burning laws. Brian, you want to summarize that for the council's benefit?
Yeah, the fire department asked that we amend the existing open burning laws. The changes that they requested are shown in red with a brief explanation of what constitutes a structure, like a deck, partition walls, fences. Also adding that fire extinguisher or other equipment that, in the amount sufficient to extinguish the open burning. They also address propane fueled, natural gas fueled fire pits, and then also the patio heaters that you're seeing more and more, putting in some regulations on those as well.
I would entertain a motion to recognize the first reading. Motion is second to recognize the first reading of ordinance 611, the open burning laws. Any further questions, comments from the council?
I know there's a couple of pergolas. Would pergola be a structure that you couldn't have a, I know there's some that have pits.
Is it combustible?
Huh?
Is it made of combustible material?
Up above, yeah. Okay. Just for clarification. I don't have one.
Chief, chief, I'd ask you to come up and speak. Having been on the other side of the Zoom thing for the last three months, nothing more frustrating to hear you guys talking than you can't hear it over the.
Yes. No, and that's why we added the decks, partition walls explanation. People would, I don't want to say argue, but question, what is a structure? If it's attached to the structure of the house, if it's combustible, like it says, we have to protect that, so. Over time, the heat will dry it out, and it becomes more combustible in time. So we're just trying to allow them to do it, but do it safely. Any other questions?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under administration D1, we have the 2020 health insurance renewal. We were presented a recommendation from administration over this past weekend for a renewal of the current plan.
Can we ask Casey a couple questions?
Sure. Casey?
So Casey, could you recap for us, I know we talked about this in our work session, but there's so much attention around the grandfather plan. And what I understood you to relate to us was that we didn't need to fear being tied to that anymore, and actually, if we leave it, premiums get better, so we find small savings, and we pick up preventative services. Are all those?
That's at zero, yeah, that's at zero cost. Those are all true, in my opinion. Again, I was always, and I still am a big proponent of the grandfather for groups. I think we stated it earlier that that pool is shrinking, and so there's some school of thought that they have, that those renewals going forward may get higher. And that, and then you've got, going into the midsize market, you've got more plan options available to you in the future. You do pick up preventative services at zero cost underneath that, those plans. There are some cheaper alternatives available. In fact, I think there are some that ones that match what you currently have now is a little bit less. I think there's some savings there.
And those preventative services, I guess I have my own reasons for why I believe they're very important. I mean, can you share from, from an industry perspective, why we should strongly consider those?
Well, preventative, they want, you know, they want you to go in and have those services done. Annual physicals, mammogram pap smear for the, for the women, you know, annual physicals for the men, those types of things. They want that. They're encouraging those at a zero-cost co-pay, generally for the fact that, hey, we can catch something early before it turns into something bigger down the road. So that's the big push on preventative. And well, childcare is in there as well, up to age 7, I believe it is on that.
And then hypothetically catching something could help us offset our future claims experience by not having, is that accurate?
Yeah, I think you could, I guess you could say that for sure. If we can, if they could eliminate a larger claim down the road, that would make sense that we could avert a larger claim, sure.
I know when we talked last year, not, so not this renewal right this second, but a year ago's renewal, and the rate went up 17%. We had a lot of discussion around that, and I know that there was some hesitancy to move forward with that because we had some large savings on the table, but there was a motion last year to move forward with that with the expectation that we then take it back and get premium costs equal to or comparative to 2018 rates prior to the 17% increase, which that renewal was $522,000. And what we're looking at now is a renewal of $650,000. So I really, I really struggle with the recommendation to just do the same thing all over again. There is a plan that would be in line with pricing from 2018, and that's the Avera one, and I get that there's a lot of contention around that. But for the life of me, I can't, I can't be behind this grandfather plan. It just, it makes no sense. When getting off of it saves us money, offers extra services, potentially makes our people healthier and offsets claims experiences. So I would make a motion that we take the well-marked non-grandfathered plan with a 5% employee premium contribution, and not the recommendation of wages at this time since we're looking at a wage study. And I would be open to omitting the wellness program that had been in place in the past.
Is there a second?
I would just ask which, which plan?
The one that is, is the most like the one we have now, but non-grandfathered. So I believe it would be the first column after, so is it the EP9, Casey, is that?
Yes. That's correct. I got the EPI and the C, with the plus, yep, flash plus, that'd be the closest.
Once again, is there a second? Hearing none? Motion would die for lack of a second. Is there any other motions?
Yes, I would like to offer a modified motion. So everything that we heard from the employees was that the most important thing was the grandfathered plan. And so my motion would be to keep the grandfathered plan, but knowing that grandfathered plan is more expensive, the trade-off would be the employees would cover 5% of that cost. Still very, very manageable, very good plan. I mean, most of us would kill for this plan. But, but that would be the buy-in as the trade-off. Understanding that down the road, we're just gonna have to keep looking at this because we can't, can't promise, you know? But I think that that's a fair trade-off, and I am not in favor of offering raises to cover that 5%. That's just gonna have to be something we budget, but we will not start charging that until January, so that gives us some time to manage things. So that would be my substitute motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Jorgensen. Further comments, questions?
One thing I do want to say, you know, Brian, I appreciate this memo that you sent out. I do disagree with, with something in here is that the benefits committee failed. I don't think we did. I know as a council members, I remember Dana asking specifically what the council wanted to find out from this meeting, and we wanted the priorities of the employees, and I feel like we got a good list of priorities from the employees. And so I feel like we did our part there as council members, and as a committee, we got a list of what they wanted. So I just wanted to state that, that we did take that. I mean, we want, yeah.
Chuck?
I would just add, I appreciate your memo, Brian. I appreciate all the input from the employees. I appreciate all the input from the council. Being a short timer, I think that we should be focusing on approving a budget number and not picking a plan. I think that should be up to that committee or administration or both, but I don't think that should be up to a council.
Okay, just for my clarification, the 5% would not kick in until January.
1121.
And would we still be maintaining the wellness program?
I don't think we can.
No, the wellness, the wellness plan, right now, we do it as a penalty. That's why I put in there that we would probably want to review it. Instead of a 5% penalty for non-compliance, maybe look at some type of incentives that would encourage compliance. So, because if we charge that penalty, it would be the 10% for those folks that aren't in compliance.
which would be over the 5% max on the grandfathered plan.
How much does wellness program cost us every year?
I don't know, off the top of my head.
Christina, is there anything you...
We do pay Averro for like a health screening. I think that runs about 1,500. Other than that, there's not probably too much more on that.
And I just want to be crystal clear, this motion and my motion are pretty much identical, except you're giving up some premium and some free preventative services. This just makes no sense to me.
I would like to echo what Chuck said. Now, I wrote notes, Mayor, just so you know. I got notes.
Very good.
This plan that we currently have as a city is fantastic. I mean, unbelievably fantastic. Is that great? Sure, it's great. But I also think that in some ways, it's a plan that started in the 90s. I wish we could buy health insurance for what we paid in the 90s, especially compared to what we make in wages, but we can't. So I do believe that something should be addressed. I don't really know, from the council's standpoint, if we're trying to save money. There's lots of ways to save money. Ultimately, I agree with Chuck in that we can hash this out in the budget process, and then we get out of the way. Because I don't want to pick deductibles, I don't want to pick premiums. I mean, I like you, but I don't want to see you. No offense, but it's not my health plan. Right? So it's our job to set a budget number. It's his job and their job to figure out what the plan is. I would like to see us moving forward that that's sort of how we do this, instead of having to us pick a plan, if that makes any sense.
The only thing I'd like to add is that if we go with this, I'd like to see the 5%, 5% penalty end now, until the end of the year. If we're going to change this, then everybody has to pay it. People are paying the 5% now. And we're talking about getting rid of that penalty. We might as well get rid of that now. I don't know how many, how many people are paying the 5%?
So a little under half, so 15 roughly?
I have a question, though. So Christina, okay, I mean, it's not Christina, but if it's 5%, even if they're paying 5% now, they don't pay an additional 5% in January. It's just 5% max, right? Like, so if they're paying it now, it's not going to affect them at all because it's the same money, right? Okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve, to renew the existing grandfathered plan, implement 5% premium contribution effective 1121. Period. Correct? Christina, I'll call the, try to land this plane and call the motion. Call the...
David? Pish? Jorgensen? Cole?
Aye.
Parsons?
Nate.
Motion carries, 4-2. 4-2, motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Casey.
Thank you.
We are recommending a special meeting. Do we need a board approval to allow that special meeting to canvass the election results?
No, just a...
Point of information?
Yeah, just for information right at the moment. We need to canvass the votes from tomorrow's election.
June 18th at 5:00 PM in council chambers, so we can canvass the results of the election on June 16th. Item number three is we have an amendment on the Empower-Brandon MOU with Dakota Resources. Just, this is just changing the timeline, adding another three months.
Correct. No cost. No additional cost.
I guess that's good.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second to approve the change with Empower-Brandon MOU agreement with Dakota Resources, changing the timeline, adding three months. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D4, Administration supplied the council with sales tax receipts from January through May. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize those results. And I guess just say, say thank you to the community of Brandon over this timeframe that we've had a lot of weird things happen, to say the least. Our sales tax receipts, January through May, are up year-to-date almost 5%. This is a testament to the citizens of Brandon for shopping, staying home here, shopping locally. Folks, this is just proof in the pudding what it can do to stay home and put your, your dollars here. Just don't let off the gas, as I told you before. Keep it up. Thank, and just a huge thank you to the citizens for what they did in patronizing our businesses and our establishments. Having a 5% increase in sales tax over this time period is phenomenal.
Mayor, I'm making sure that the liquor sales stay up. Just wanted to make sure.
Chuck seconded?
Yep.
Very good. And I mean, it's just heartfelt thanks to the citizens of Brandon. On behalf of the entire city council, we thank all of you for doing what you did to keep the city going at a pace that exceeds 2019. Tremendous. Keep it up, don't let it die. Moving on to the streets, we have a pay app number 10 for the Holly Boulevard Improvement Project to First Rate Excavating for $226,209.12. I can have a motion to approve? Motion is second to approve pay app number 10 to First Rate Excavating. Any questions?
You all good with that, Tanner?
Any other? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a pay app number three for the core area reconstruction project to Sukup Construction for $683,582.52. If I can have a motion to approve pay app number three? Motion is second to approve as presented. Any questions?
Did you say things are going?
They're going very quickly. We are a little bit ahead of schedule, so hopefully we can get Main Street open here in the next couple of weeks. And then probably at the end of the week, they're going to start on the last phase. So they'll be tearing up a little bit of dogwood and starting up first.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a request from the administration to purchase a additional trailer in the amount of $5,650. They've earmarked one of their current trailers for, to be a permanent site for the repair and replacement of sewer lines with a trench attached to it, so that equipment can be accessible at all times. Item is within budget because it's underspent on some other items. If I can have a motion to approve? Motion is second to approve the purchase of a additional trailer for $5,650, as presented by the administration. Any questions?
I just wanted to make one other comment, too, that we are going to be purchasing a little bit more safety equipment, so. It's unbudgeted, but I think I can squeeze some of it under this budget yet, too, so.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Pay app number nine for the Main Avenue Interceptor Sewer Project to H&amp;W Contracting, $231,956.52. Need a motion? Motion is second to approve pay app number nine as presented to H&amp;W Contracting. Any questions, comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Pay app number four to Metro Construction for the well, well number eight pump house and transmission line in the amount of $67,004.78. Motion is second to approve pay app number four for pump house and transmission line on well number eight. Questions?
When do we anticipate having well eight being a go?
So we are waiting on an adapter that is behind because of COVID, so we're probably not going to get that for a while yet. They're expecting end of July, maybe mid-August to have this project completed, so it is behind schedule, but they're doing as much as they can.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, Christina provided the financial statements as of 5/31/2020. Comments? Christina?
Not really on the financials. We are starting the water meter replacement in phase one tomorrow. So Ferguson Waterworks is in town. We did a meeting today and they are going to start on that phase tomorrow. So they'll be here for approximately three to four weeks, long enough to get all of them changed out. They have about 677 meters to change out, so.
Are those all digital, Lynn? The meter replacements are digital, read?
Yes. Back to analog.
That's the best thing you've said all night. That digital stuff, when you have a leak in your sprinkler, I went out of my mind. You can't go down there and look to see what's going on with that digital stuff.
Yeah, they are getting rid of that. You don't have to have a flashlight.
So that is a good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you. You can see the meter turn when you have a analog. Thank you. Any questions on the financial statements? If not, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss a potential litigation item. Motion is second to go into executive session at 6:35 PM for a litigation issue. All in favor? Oh, 7:01. Sorry, folks, we don't have a clock that works in this. Yeah. At least I can see it spin. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Yep. Yep, it's time to do that, let everybody know.